I told you otherwise anyway.
Ah, just so many things have come up.
To this point.
Look at all this technology. Wow.
Hey, new chairs. Wow, I miss this.
Wow, this must be just for you. You started this about ten minutes ago, didn't you?
Inintended to go anywhere though.
I'm gonna go back out here and see. Pretty fuzzy. How y'all doing?
We're good.
How you doing?
We're good. You've been busy, haven't you?
I have been busy. Yes, I am.
Before we call the meeting to order, if anyone wishes to speak tonight, whether it's opposed or in favor or whatever, would you please sign up on our sign-in sheet right up here?
Well Jimmy, you just shut the room up when you said that.
We would need to... Well, as long as somebody puts this on the record, we'll say... So we'll need to say whoever's gonna make the move. Okay. How do you turn this thing off? What do I press? So as long as somebody will say, if you were moving, you would say the applicants propose to add about three acres, then somebody could say so moved.
I said okay.
So don't you go visit the fires?
Well, yeah.
Well, if somebody says that, I can usually say, you know what they're moving.
Let's call a meeting order. Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty nineteen. All stands for the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first thing on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting for October fifteenth. If everyone had a chance to look those over. Anybody like to make any additions, attractions, comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for that. For approval.
I'll move to approve the minutes of October the fifteenth.
I have a motion. I need a second.
A second.
And I have a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Oh yeah, we're abstaining, aren't we? Yeah, abstaining. We're up here. I want to hear.
Oh, okay. Well, you still read the paper, never mind.
So Jake, just to confirm, you got that, the two extensions. Okay, thank you.
Okay. First thing on the agenda tonight is an open public hearing for an extension for, uh, expansion for Tri-Squared Chemical Mill. Uh, that's SP nineteen oh four. The meeting will proceed as follows. The required disclosure will be read, staff will make a presentation followed by the applicant. Then anyone else who wishes to address the issue will be given the opportunity. Members of the public will have three minutes each for testimony. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. Any members of the audience who wish to speak must sign in in order to testify. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant, staff, or anyone else who testifies. I now call the public hearing to order and will have Jake read the disclosure statement.
All persons testifying will be deemed part of the application and must provide their full name and mailing address. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicant's an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish or finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Thank you. Questions of the commission? Do any members of the commission wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? Do any members of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosure of any member of the commission? Okay, if not, we'll hear the staff report from Mr. Straight, please.
All right. Thank you Chair, fellow commissioners. Matt Straight presenting for staff. The project is located in Way and next to I five. The zoning on the site is light industrial. The project today proposes to add a new titanium chemical milling facility to their existing facility. They're proposing it in two phases that will total seven thousand square feet. And if you see on the slide in front of you here, you're looking at phase one. This is phase two, and I can go back and forth between those again so you can see the addition. The building just stretches in phase two. Right now, the chemical, the chemicals they're gonna be using to mill the titanium will be brought onsite in trucks. They will do the milling and then they're gonna put that, uh, used chemical, depleted chemical back onto a truck and truck it offsite. Phase two is intended to actually process that, uh, waste product more efficiently so it can be, um, deposited straight into the sewer system but be clean and safe at that point. That's what the two phases are all about and why they're doing the first phase first without that. And you guys can correct me if I got any of that wrong. It's also gonna be adding some paved access to the existing site as you see here in red. They're also going to be extending some of the fencing that exists onsite right now. You can see an image there of what the fencing looks like and I've highlighted in red where they're extending that fencing. It's primarily just going to screen the facility from I five. And lastly, they're also gonna be, uh, adding some external mechanical equipment on the outside of the building, which we'll show you right now. So this slide shows the proposed elevations and what you're looking at here is a view from the north and the south. This is the elevation, uh, that faces west and you can see it's showing both phase one and phase two with the demarcating line being basically right here. And this is the view that you're going to see from I five and again, both phases are shown there as you can see the external mechanical equipment. So just like the other projects that we go through, in order to support this project tonight, we have to show that it meets certain criteria, so we're gonna walk through those right now. The applicant, uh, the project does not conflict with any comp plan policies. There is a comp plan policy that talks about, uh, kind of environmental standards and environmental stewardship and the chemicals that they're gonna be using at this, uh, facility by state law do have to go through certain permitting processes with DEQ and the applicants are aware of that and have gone through that process. So there are no conflicts there. The project also doesn't conflict with any of our development code standards and we're gonna talk about those in a little bit more detail here in a moment. The project can't, uh, result in any negative impacts to traffic. Uh, the bulk of the facilities you see here on the slide behind me is, already exists. The red part is the new part that they're proposing. Everything else onsite is already there. The new chemical mill facility, uh, will be small compared to the rest of the establishment and is only planned to bring in two new employees per shift. So the increase in staff isn't gonna cause any transportation issues. And the site actually anticipates having a reduced, uh, amount of trucking to the site because right now their product has to be taken offsite to be chemically milled and then brought back. Once they have that facility onsite, those trucks will no longer be needed and this project will actually result in a decrease of truck traffic to the site. No signage at all is proposed through this project. All the required utilities for this site are onsite. They're not gonna require any new connections needed for that at all. Fire hasn't indicated any specific concerns with this project. Uh, they basically gave an approval and that information is in your, uh, staff report packet. They will have to work with, uh, DEQ and Albany, uh, regarding the discharge of waste into the sewer system. They're aware of that and explained in their narrative that they're going through that process. The new structure is, uh, going to be consistent with the stormwater plan that was already approved for the first project. They showed an expansion area when this was approved originally and the stormwater project already takes that into, uh, account and so this project is already consistent with the stormwater requirements for the site.
So what was the blue on that?
That is the existing basin onsite. And they're proposing some small modifications to that basin, but it's essentially gonna stay the same way you see there on the slide. So the project is not allowed to emit any kind of nuisance hazards according to our code. Based on staff's review, we think the only nuisance hazard this could possibly emit is, uh, noise and the applicants have indicated in their narrative that all of the mechanical equipment placed outside is going to have some form of noise suppression built into all of them. And in addition to that, it's a considerable distance from the nearest residential, uh, building and it's got the building in between the residential areas and the external equipment. So we don't anticipate any issues or problems with the, uh, noise coming from the project. Regarding the development standards, the project also has to meet our development standards from the code. And I'm not gonna walk through each one of them individually, but I will go on to say the eighty percent, or eighty percent of the site is required to remain impervious. Sorry, it can be impervious. The remaining, uh, has to be impervious to, to rainwater. And the site features a one acre basin, as you can see here, which will help assure that the project stays compliant with that requirement. The existing facility, uh, already has parking and that proposed parking is adequate for this addition. Like we said, they're only planning on having, uh, a couple extra staff members per shift onsite based on that. Including those extra spaces that would be required by this expansion, the project would require sixty spaces and there are actually sixty-eight existing today. They show some existing, some future expansion of parking area on the slide there, uh, but that won't be needed in order to comply with the project as you see it today. They still have more room to expand further on the project site and they may need it at that point, but for this specific expansion, they're in compliance. So based on that, staff recommends approval of the project based on the conditions of approval that are included in your staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. Myself and the applicants are here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Applicants or applicants wish to make a presentation? Okay. Uh, let me see.
Yes, you need, yes. Yes, you read this now. Yes. Yes.
As I mentioned in the beginning of this meeting, if you wish to testify during this hearing, please sign in and state your address for the record. When you present your name, is, when you, when your name is called, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for record. You will have three minutes to speak. If you have any residence... If you have any, sorry, read material or other evidence we'd like to see, please hand it to staff. The staff will distribute it to the members of the commission and the applicant as well will be placed on the record. We will now ask for testimony for those in favor of the application. Okay, we'll now hear from those opposed. We will now hear from anyone else who wishes to speak about the subject. Okay, then we would call for rebuttal now.
We don't need to do that because there's no testimony. And, uh, I would just say, the record will respond when you made calls for these and nobody responded.
Okay. So we'll state that the record says that no one replied, so we won't call for rebuttal from the applicant. Now, does anyone have questions from the staff? Does the commission have any questions from staff?
So what are the next steps as far as some of the conditions of approval and the chemicals and...
Well, the next step of them is gonna be going to a building permit and they're gonna have to satisfy any of the conditions that applied prior to building permit and make sure that those are satisfied.
So the checklist.
Any other questions or comments?
Pardon?
I was just saying, any other questions or comments by any commissioner?
Well, I have one. So the detention pond you're talking about wasn't on the original plans, so that must've come up during, after, you know, when you guys went and did the stormwater, after we approved it.
I'd probably need Janil's help on this one. I wasn't around when the project was originally approved.
I have the original and there's no detention pond on here. It could be in the verbiage, which I probably didn't read thoroughly, but does that make sense?
Who's the date on that?
Come on.
February of seventeen, February twenty-two.
Please state your name.
Janal Booth, City Engineer. So I haven't looked at the previous application, uh, just before this, but my recollection was that the, at the time of the previous application, the stormwater system was probably not designed because it often isn't at that stage and that was required as a condition of approval that they design, um, the stormwater system, it be reviewed and approved prior to construction. And we went through those steps. So the existing stormwater basin and system was reviewed and approved for the original construction. There's a condition of approval that says, in this, in this application, that says stormwater change plans and calculations accounting for additional impervious area must be submitted, reviewed, and approved prior to issuance of building permits. Calculations must show that the existing pond detention volume is adequate for the additional impervious surface or proposed modifications to the pond to increase storage capacity. So the, I don't recall without pulling out that file and the original calculations if that basin was originally designed for this additional area, but that's part of the process. That's why that condition is in there that, that if it wasn't, we'll go through that process again.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing now. Is there any more comments or anything? Questions? Well, and Chair would entertain a motion and I would suggest you look at your handout. If you're gonna vote for approval, this would be appropriate for the motion.
I make a motion. We approve SP nineteen dash oh four.
You wanna read that before?
Yes.
Please.
Based upon the findings of fact, any testimony, the conditions of approval and staff recommendations listed in the staff report and because the proposed project satisfies the applicable criteria, I motion for the adoption of the findings from the staff report dated November twelfth, two thousand nineteen and further motion that the planning commission approve site plan nineteen dash oh four, TI squared chemical mill expansion pursuant to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second, Ed.
And I have a second. Any other comments, corrections, additions, anything? Okay, I'll call for a vote. And all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to... Thank you, gentlemen. About the appeal and stuff.
Go ahead and put that on the record. Yes, put that on the record.
I made a mistake. Just for the record, in conclusion, we'd like to thank everyone for their testimony tonight. And if anyone would like to appeal to the decision to counsel, you must appeal within fifteen days. I should've added that earlier and I apologize. Next thing on the agenda is the hearing for SP oh five Hendrick Food Truck. The meeting will proceed as follows. The required disclosure will be read, staff will make a presentation followed by the applicant. And then anyone else who wishes to address the issue will be given the opportunity. Members of the public will have three minutes each for testimony. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. Any members of the audience who wish to speak must sign in in order to testify. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant, staff, or anyone else who testifies. I now call the order to public hearing. If Jake would read the statement, disclosure statement, please.
Yep. All persons testifying will be deemed parties of the application and must provide their full name and mailing address. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use, land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicant's an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or, or land use board of appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the, of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance or to, or to a time and date certain or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission wish to declare a potential or actual conflict, a conflict of interest or bias? Does any members of the commission wish to report?
Yeah, I do know Dawn, so.
Okay.
I've eaten there.
Uh, did any members of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contact?
I drove through there today.
You did?
I did.
Okay.
It's a tight fit, too.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosure of any member of the commission? If not, uh, could we have our staff report, Mr. Straight? Thank you.
You bet. Thank you Chairman, fellow commissioners. Matt Straight presenting the agenda item for staff tonight. As you may recall, the project is located along Old Salem Road near the Loves Truck Stop. The zoning on the site is light industrial. The food truck court was approved in November of twenty eighteen, not too long ago, and at that time, it was for six different vendors, which I've highlighted here in green on the slide. The applicant is requesting a seventh, uh, vendor location at this time. And they are also proposing to add one awning or canopy cover, depending on what you say, and they're proposing that to be metal, similar to the one you see here on the screen, although that's not the exact one. You may have actually seen it already because it's already been installed on the site. They're also requesting to add additional lighting to the site to make it easier to be there at night. As always, we have to make sure the project meets all the required criteria in order to support the project, so we're gonna walk through those here tonight very quickly. The proposed additions do not conflict with any aspect of the comprehensive plan based on staff's review. The use, uh, the use itself isn't listed in the code. You may recall this from last year, so we had the planning commission approve that use as something that was similar to, similar in character and intensity to other uses onsite. And so the use on the site has already been blessed by the planning commission. All the setbacks have been met on the property and are met by the new seventh location they're proposing as well. And like the previous approval, all the vendors are gonna need to comply with all the county's rules for environmental health and so we've left a condition of approval on the project. There was a holdover from the other version just to make sure it applied to this new seventh vendor as well. They would have to comply without the condition, but we just wanted to be sure to be clear on that aspect. The project cannot create any additional traffic impacts. That's one of our criteria. And for this request, the additional vendor should add thirty-three new trips to the site based on the applicant's numbers for a total of two hundred and thirty-three trips daily on the site. Now, the, that doesn't trigger a traffic study at all. That's triggered at three hundred and so the, uh, previous mitigation that we've installed on this project or is being installed on the project based on the previous review should suffice to address the traffic concerns. The awning does present some possible pedestrian circulation issues. Uh, as it's designed right now, you really can't enter the awning from the side, only from the front. And in order to come in the front, it kinda leaves people navigating through the parking spaces and so what we've done is, in order to make sure it complies with the code, we've added a condition of approval asking them to address that, um, as they go forward. We left it flexible as to how they address it. Would they want to put it inside entrances? Cut the awning back to be shorter? Just make sure the pedestrians can circulate without going into the parking area is all we, um, threw onto that. The code, uh, requires that lighting have no negative impacts and they are proposing some additional lighting with this exhibit, or with this, uh, application. And so we've added a condition of approval to assure that's not a problem. As you can see here on the site in front of you, the application site is highlighted in red. It's an old aerial image, so the actual project isn't there yet. And there is a neighbor next to them, a residential neighbor, and so we've added a condition of approval that requires shielding on any lighting they put up to make sure it isn't shining into that neighboring property. No additional utility connections are required at this point. The applicant had actually intended to add seven spaces all along and so they actually installed the infrastructure, the water and sewer for a seventh vendor and then realizing they only had permission for six, which is one of the reasons they're back here, but all the improvements for that seventh vendor are already installed. And there are no wetlands or, uh, near the project and we're not anticipating any negative impacts to any of our waterways. So that covers the criteria, but they also have to comply with the standards from our zoning code. The project, uh, we're gonna walk through some of those now. The project site, again, requires eighty percent of it, uh, to remain impervious. I have that backwards. Twenty percent has to remain impervious. But in this case, their code does specify that the planning commission can allow a greater number and you may recall last year when we were before you, uh, the applicant's request actually, um, requested to go up to a hundred percent, uh, complete impervious, uh, for the site and you approved that as a planning commission, so they're staying consistent with that. Regarding the project site, we talked about this last year. The, the parking situation is very unique. Uh, the use isn't listed in our code, so as parking, there is no parking standards listed for this kind of use. So we kind of went with what the applicant proposed last time and called that sufficient. Uh, last time we approved twenty-two shared parking spaces with the facilities in front of it. Now the applicant is proposing a seventh location in here with no additional parking space proposed as part of this project. So we have no standards to fall back on. So rather than tell the applicant they couldn't add a seventh space because we didn't have standards for their use, what we've done is we proposed adding a condition of approval to the project that basically links parking impacts into this project into perpetuity in the future to this seventh spot. If parking becomes a problem, and we'll know that through complaints, and I even added a provision in this condition of approval that says the city manager can step up and say the parking has a problem. And in the event that parking does become problematic, the applicants can find a way to fix that through changing their site plan or they're gonna have to yank that seventh location because that might be exacerbating the parking problem. So we felt that was a fair way to move forward and added that to the project for you tonight. So with that, staff recommends approval with the conditions of approval. I did wanna mention one more note. We've also added a condition of approval that has basically given a tacit approval for... I did want to mention one more note, we've also added a condition of approval that has basically given a tacit approval for additional canopies on the site. You see the one blue canopy here, we thought it was kind of odd to give approval for one of those, if we felt it was appropriate on the site for one, it might be appropriate for all. So we added a condition of approval that basically gives them approval to add those to any other vendor here, as long as it doesn't impact the parking or pedestrian circulation in any way. And so that's something that I wanted to be sure the planning commission was comfortable with, because it wasn't on the site plan and it wasn't requested by the applicant. And so I wanted to be sure to make that clear as we move forward, but I felt that was appropriate in this case. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation, myself and the applicants are here if you have any questions.
Are we considering the canopy a permanent or temporary item?
I think it's pitched in the staff report as a permanent item. And it is. They even said they'd be happy to unbolt it and disassemble it as we went through this process, and we felt that was a bit excessive.
Well, if it's like the original one, it's possibly bolted out.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we don't want it to become a kite.
So at what point do they need to come up with a solution to the pedestrian?
We didn't add a timeline to that, we felt we would leave that flexible, I'm happy to add a timeline to that. In the previous version of the project, we added a lot of requirements on it at a six-month period. That was a bit arbitrary, but we had to kind of draw a line in the sand somewhere. And we've been working with the applicants to make sure that all those improvements were installed, and they're still working on some of them, but they've been diligent with making sure that's moving forward.
That was going to be my question, is how are they doing on the conditions of approval from a year ago?
They've been working on it, they were having some trouble getting contractors, and you can speak to them about that as well. But they were having some trouble getting contractors because it's such a busy building time that they were having trouble getting anybody to commit to it. And so they're a bit behind the eight ball, but they've proved to us that they've been diligently working on it and it didn't lapse or lag, and so some of the stuff is behind schedule, it's now a year later and they're still working on a few of those improvements, but you've probably been over there and seen that they're doing a lot of stuff lately.
Were there not planting strips in the parking lot, so the impervious surface really isn't a hundred percent, is?
Well, we left it that way on purpose because we left a lot of flexibility in how they can do the planting strips, we did require planting strips. And they could do that by cutting up the pavement and letting all those plants root into the actual ground, or they could have brought on planters that sat up on some kind of wood surface on top of the cement, and they could just water those with trucks or whatever else, so we left some flexibility on how they move forward with that, but they finally landed on, they came in and got approved through Janelle and I, and they're working on building those right now.
We can ask the applicant, if you want to, one of you want to come forward, please answer questions for us, would you mind stepping up? Yeah, go ahead and sign in and then have a seat, please.
So, question?
Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
I do. It looks like we're intending to have covered canopies at each of these locations, so we're going to have seating at each one of these, how are we differentiating this from restaurant or cafes?
I can't answer the differentiation piece, but I can say that it is not our intent to put a canopy at each. The one particular food truck, Cinco Australia, is the one that has put in the first canopy, they're the only ones, well, Norinas had one originally, but she has vacated and took her cover with her. But at this point, none of the other tenants have requested that, so it would be on an as requested basis by the tenant, we're not the ones dictating.
Well, but on our conditions of approval, we're telling you that it's going to be okay to just do that, and I don't know that I'm comfortable with that.
Well, the commission wishes to strike that, again, that was not something the applicants requested, I just threw that in to try and make everybody's life a little bit easier, but that certainly, if that's a condition the commission's uncomfortable with, we can certainly remove it. It would go straight to building permit, but that is something that comes through us first to review as it's going off to the county, yeah.
But if it's already a condition of approval, it wouldn't come to you for approval, would it?
It wouldn't be coming to us for a land use approval per se, but we do do a planning review of every building permit that comes through to make sure it meets our code's requirements, and these would be no different, because they do require building permits.
Why would it apply, why would it require a building permit?
So anything that's a commercial use requires a building permit, I checked with the, that's part of this process, I checked in with the Lynn County Planning and Building Department. And anything commercial use, regardless of the size, it could be forty square feet, if it's intended for commercial use, it requires a building permit. And goes through an engineer review and everything.
Laurie, do you know how they're going to modify that canopy?
I don't. This is the first time I've been aware of that condition, we didn't get a copy of this until this evening, so I'm not sure, but we'll figure it out.
So we can either shorten the supplies, or we can remove.
Yeah, if you can, come on, just so we get on the record, thank you, please identify yourself on the record.
As the canopy?
No, identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dawn Hendrick.
Go ahead now.
As the canopy sits in front of the food court, they could either remove some of the siding to let it, because in the summertime, they took all of it off of one side and you could walk through the side of it. But with the winter and the wind that we've had, they put the sides back on. So they could either shorten one side or shorten the whole thing to allow the, to allow access.
Yeah, because that looks pretty dangerous.
Well, what you're seeing there isn't an actual representation of the drawing itself, and we didn't do a site visit to see if there actually was room. There might be room to navigate around that from a pedestrian's point of view right now and not get involved in the parking, but not being sure about that, we threw the condition on in surplus of caution.
Well, quite honestly, if the cars, if the parking spots in front of the cart are taken, then you are moving, you're moving, you're right, I mean, it's close.
I would recommend that we strike that condition of approval and let staff handle it at staff level.
But what you're saying though is that then they can't have them.
No. They can have them, but they have to go, they can have them, but they have to go through the process with the building permit. But you strike that condition of approval, correct?
No, because my understanding is if we say we're striking it, then they can't have it.
No, 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 that's not true.
If you strike the condition of approval, they would be allowed to have the one that you see on the screen here today.
Right.
But they wouldn't be allowed to put any more on if they came in for more of the canopy covers, they would have to come back to the planning commission again every time. Now, granted, when the new code goes into place, that won't be the case, the new code will let us do an administrative site plan review and be much quicker, and so if they happen to request that after the new code, this won't be an issue anymore.
That was what I was after.
That's what you're after. Because I don't really have a problem with it as long as there's access. That's the only thing, and you're going to have to get a building permit no matter what, so I mean, that's all taken care of, but as long as there's access, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, because it might just have to be shorter, that's all.
Sure.
Right.
Do you find that there are people stopping their cars, or do a lot of the truckers just walk over, or do you know?
Both, yeah. I don't know that we've been able to do a study, yeah, to know, but just being over there and seeing what traffic is coming through, it's really both.
I go by there quite often, I've never seen all the parking spaces full at one time.
Yeah, around the noon hour, depending on the day, it can get kind of full, but.
Yeah, they come and go so fast. But is that going to change if there's seating in every one of these things? I doubt it, I doubt it. And I'd be okay even if one of the vendors comes and gets a Bymark canopy and puts it out in front of his place because the rain's coming, that's the, he can then take it down when he's done, I'd be okay with that, so. I would not be. We can't use it with the city to celebrate it anymore, right? Is that what that is? I mean, come on.
And if I may add, the paving is getting done tomorrow, and that's kind of the last big part of the improvements that.
I saw your curb and got excited about going in this week, so I thought you were coming close to.
Yeah.
So, can I show you something on here?
Sure.
No. So when they pay, they're going to pay all the way over, just all there, we were only required to do this. We're doing it all the way over and down to here on this driveway, and then there are going to be additional parking spots right there. So that will help with the, with the, I don't have this card.
And where are the planters going, or whatever you're doing?
They're in.
There's, you want to go show them?
Oh, right.
Go ahead, Ben, show us, go ahead.
I'll let him, he's taller. He can reach.
There's one that took this whole area right here. There's another one that took this triangle right here, and there's another one that took this whole parking spot right here.
Thank you.
Little curb.
Are those raised planter boxes, or are they just actually in the ground?
They're, so they're regular sized curbing for the size, and then they basically write it the same surfaces that, is the the ground.
They tore out the asshole.
So we'll have to dig, we'll have to dig that out to actually plant where we were planting in there.
But they did tear out the blacktop.
Yeah, the blacktop is out.
Any other questions?
It did look nice, by the way, when I drove through today, the planters. I was really happy that there weren't freestanding barrels that you argued over.
Yeah, and we need to get plants in them soon because we've already had two people back through two of them.
They've driven through two or three of them already.
It's a tight spot, for sure.
It's a tight spot.
Well, and they're used to being able to back in there, now they can't.
You have a tow truck on hand to pull them back in.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Public testimony, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, if you wish to testify during this hearing, please sign in and state your address for the record when you present. When your name is called, please come forward to state your name and city of residence for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak, if you have any written material or other evidence you would like to see us, us to see, please hand it to staff. The staff will distribute it to the members of the commission and the applicant as well as be placed in the record. I'll ask for testimony for those in favor of the application, which we've had. We'll now hear from anyone opposed. We'll now hear from anyone who wishes to speak on any subject, not any subject, but, okay, any, do you have any rebuttals? No rebuttal, well, I have to read it. Now, commissioners, do you have any more questions of staff?
I'm still on number seven, if we grant this condition of approval to put a canopy and seating at every space, they have the right to come in and just get a permit, we have no right to say no, it's already been granted a condition of approval. And I'm not comfortable with that much seating on this spot, I would prefer seven not be on here.
Well, I'm hearing from several commissioners that they are opposed to this and would like to see it removed.
Yeah, I think there's only one of me.
Well, we've had two, or did you change your mind? On removing that condition.
I don't understand why.
I don't know why it's in there.
I don't know why it has to be removed, I mean, what's the?
I'm not comfortable with that much seating. If they put canopies and seating in front of all seven of those, that's a lot of seating areas.
Yeah.
In a very tight area.
Well, we need to keep them up.
Very tight right now.
But they can allow canopies.
Just as a side note.
They're only in the driving space.
We couldn't do all seven no matter what, because there's nowhere around this vendor to have one, and these two couldn't do it because it would be impacting parking. So it's really just these folks in here that could potentially add canopies in the future.
Anything did say that we have to allow pedestrian access?
Right, that same condition of approval would apply to any canopy they added, which would have to have, yeah, pedestrian access around it.
My thoughts were to have staff approve it as opposed to have to keep coming back for a canopy and another canopy and another canopy.
Well, leaving the condition would allow staff to do that, removing the condition would make it come back to you folks every time.
Only until our new codes and conferences are planted, and that's shortcoming in the future, which by then is, they would all, well. And then all they would have to do is come to the counter and ask for permit.
Well, it's a little bit more detailed than that, but yes, it's administrative, they would still have to do an application, pay a fee, we would still write a small report, but we would just do that administratively and then it would just go in the file and be done.
But they wouldn't have to come to us.
Correct, correct, that's the plan.
That would make it easier.
But they would have to pay a fee for every one of them?
Well, they would have regardless, that, that's.
No, they wouldn't, if we did the condition of approval, they would have to do it.
You are correct, if you did the condition of approval, they wouldn't have to do any land use permitting, it would just be building permit. As where if they, if you pulled condition seven and it went forward and relied on the new code, they would still have to do a small land use application to be done administratively before building permit, that's true.
What's a building permit going to cost for a canopy? Any clues? I'm just curious.
Typically, those fees are based on the number of hours that it takes for them to review the application or the plans for the permit, so. Usually it's a small, usually like under four hundred square feet, usually I tell people for accessory structures, this is typically like residential, like three to five hundred dollars. So, I haven't had anything specific this small for a commercial use to judge off of. But I can base off of like a garden shed that's four hundred square feet, typically three to five hundred dollars, and that's the fees we get from them.
Excuse me, we charge that kind of money for that?
And on the commercial here, there's a, I think we'll have to charge a school excise tax of fifty cents per square foot. Yeah, so this is three hundred and sixty square feet.
Lots of school excise tax?
Yeah.
Is that what you just said?
Any commercial or industrial, fifty cents per square foot for additional space. So, because this is a covered area, falls under that.
But none of that has anything to do with the condition of approval, that's a building permit.
No, and that's all building permits.
And they're going to pay that regard.
Nothing land use, what Matt's saying is, if we pull that, each time they want to add a, each time they come to the counter for a land use action, they're going to have to pay that land use fee for every, and that's.
How much is that?
We just changed it. Five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that's more or less to cover Matt's time in reviewing the site plan.
For each canopy?
Right.
It would still be a staff report for each one, so yeah, there's time there involved.
Now, if you leave it on there, and let's say they come in for one site plan review to adjust the parking, right? If we have an X number of parking spots and he wants to move some over here to accommodate additional seating there, that would be a site plan review, but it wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, that would be administrative.
Be administrative.
The future code, yeah. And to be clear, even today, under the existing version of the code, if an applicant comes in and wants to change a project a little bit, we allow them a little bit of wiggle room at that stage prior to building permit, and we really asked the question at that point, would the planning commission have acted differently if they had this information? And that was actually a very difficult question for us to ask for this project, because it was really on the line, is this so small that it's not really that big a deal and just move forward? Well, we figured the seventh spot increased the intensity of the use, and that might have affected how you acted. And we figured the canopy could potentially affect the aesthetics of the site, and there were some criteria that revolved around that, and so we figured it was probably enough for us to go ahead and bring it back to you, but that was a difficult question for us to answer.
I am real concerned about how tight it is. I mean, but, I mean, we already have one canopy, as long as we make it so that people can walk around, I'm okay with it. But I'm almost looking at it going, gosh, you know, you have that whole piece of land, why can't that be bigger? Not my, not my place, sorry.
I think food carts come and go, I think, don't they, as we've seen?
Already, yes.
So, I mean, there's a rotation, so.
And we don't have an immediate application for the seventh food truck, but there was the potential recently for reevers left, which is what brought us here to do this, because there is a potential. But we don't have someone knocking on our door at the moment.
So do you still have six, or do you have five since reevers left?
Six.
If you count the coffee cart, there are six.
Well, I'd like to see just how many of you are in favor without calling for a vote. Of removing number seven condition, would you give us a show of hands? Those in favor of removing it? That's two of us, and I assume the rest of you are in favor of adopting that. So each time they came in and asked for another permit. Let me back up now, how many sites on there would be actually accessible to have another canopy?
Well, it looks like just the, just the four here along the bottom, and technically just the three because they've already got one. But they couldn't put one in front of this or this without impacting the parking.
But they could have the parking back on the backside.
Well, they started wiggling around parking, that's probably something they'd have to come into us to potentially bring back to you, we'd have to take a look at that.
And what is the white, isn't that already a covered area?
Yeah, that's a shipping container with holes punched in the side for seating, indoor seating. No, just the one, this is a vendor right here that you're seeing. The green square was added by staff just to try and make it more clear, but the white is where it. The green square was added by staff just to try and make it more clear, but the, the white is where a trailer actually sits today. I'm not sure why it's bumped out further, but.
Oh, so that's only, that's not a trailer and a storage area or anything?
No, this right here is a trailer. Um, I'm not sure what's behind that right now. The green square was added by staff just to try and make it more clear.
That's where the, uh, food station is.
Oh, is that it? Okay, okay.
Okay.
So then I guess he couldn't have a canopy because he didn't have the space for it. So we're really down to just the two. And given this guy's angle, I, it might just be the one. And again, I feel sympathetic to the applicants. They didn't ask for that condition. I threw that on to try and be a nice guy and here it seems to be creating more trouble than it was worth, but.
No, no, I, I want you to do those kind of things. Yeah, I think that's why you're here.
I, I think what was bothering me when I drove through. I'm married to somebody in a wheelchair. There is no wheelchair seating in that entire place. And we're going to be putting more seating in and still none. The nearest handicap parking is all the way out at the street. She's gonna have to roll through the entire parking lot if she wanted to use all of that seating, but it's fine.
That's a good point.
Albany just had the discussion, when you get this many food carts and this much seating, whether or not it rose to the level of a restaurant and did they have to meet ADA standards? I don't think this does, and I think they decided it didn't. But it's something that we really should consider. If we're going to have seating for a hundred and fifty people, it might be nice to have at least a couple of those spaces accessible.
Where do you get a hundred and fifty?
I don't. I, I have no idea how much seating is gonna be there.
Oh, okay.
It's saying here that we could have a canopy in front of every unit. That's what's written. Now, it looks like that's not necessarily possible. There will be room for three canopies total. And currently the guy that's in their side blades, kind of at an angle, that's a pizza wagon. Now, last weekend they left and they went to the festival or wherever they did, and then they came back on Sunday. Well, no, I, I'm at the minority on this. We need to carry on.
Yeah.
Canopy won't work for somebody like that that's coming and going.
Okay, well, let's, let's continue here. I have one more question for you, Matt. Uh, how many handicap parking do we have there?
Just a little spot here.
Why is there any on the other end?
Down here.
Trucked.
I don't know that any was required. Uh, we didn't, we didn't discuss that in detail in the last hearing. Typically handicap spaces aren't a land use issue. They're a building permit issue. And so we don't require people to show us where their handicap spots are gonna be, where their ADA spots are gonna be at the land use level. That's something that comes to building permit stage.
So you just require a certain number or something to?
We usually don't even have to do that because even if the land use side stayed silent on it, when it came to the building permit side, they would have to put those in.
Okay. All right, we're gonna close this.
That's something the county looks for.
Okay, we're gonna close this part of the hearing. And is there any more comments that the commissioners like to make or before we call for a vote? Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion and there is an option you've been handed, uh, for, to, for approval if, if you so desire.
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Uh, based upon the findings of fact, any testimony, the conditions of approval and staff recommendations listed in the staff report, and because the proposed project satisfies the applicable criteria, I motion for the adoption of the findings from the staff report dated November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and further motion that the planning commission approve site plan nineteen dash zero five Hedrick Food Truck Court additional vendor and canopy pursuant to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. And we have a second.
One second, Ed.
And we have a second. Any other comments? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Conclusion. I would like to thank all of those who testified tonight. Your comments have been very helpful. Thank you. If you would like to appeal this decision to the city council, you must file an appeal within fifteen days. Uh, did you have any updates?
We are, I was gonna give you a small update on the code as it's coming along. It's making good progress. Uh, we sat down with John and went through it again, page by page, at our level to make sure that he was meeting all of our needs from the planning side and from the management side. And we made some small tweaks to it at that point as well. And so we're expecting those changes to be made very shortly and for us to come back to you guys for another workshop, hopefully our last workshop, uh, to run through it and make sure that all those changes were addressed. Uh, we are just finishing all the changes that we need to make to the comprehensive plan in order to do the zone change, uh, that we're proposing to do. And so when you see it at a hearing level, you're gonna see that comprehensive plan there as well. We're gonna give you a redlined strikeout version, so you have to spend a month reading every word of the thing. And then you can see the changes we made. There's not a lot of them. Uh, our comprehensive plan is old and to go through and make the entire thing updated was not what we wanted to do. We're making a bare bones, a minimum amount of changing just to make the zoning code move forward. We are hoping to do a more global comprehensive plan revision, uh, probably next year. I think we're gonna kick it off next year. And so we'll see an all new comprehensive plan coming along soon. So the version we have now, it's just gonna be a Band-Aid version to get us through the zoning code update. So it's not much. And so we'll probably bring that to you at the hearing level as well. Uh, that's about all I have for staff, uh, uh, announcements, except did you wanna make an announcement about the, their staff levels and the missing seat?
Oh, in case, yeah, it hadn't, the word hadn't gotten out. We did get, um, I guess a request from Scott Stimson. He resigned from the planning commission. So we're down to just the eight members now, so. And I think based off of what we've discussed in the past, we're gonna over attrition, get down to seven members. We won't be replacing Scott. Just kind of a heads up. I should have mentioned that at the beginning.
I was gonna mention that. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make any comments about Scott?
Well, Scott, uh, has a special day regarding his.
Yeah, write your name.
Have to follow the rules. You have to follow the rules.
Okay, Scott and I had a conversation, uh, where he, he made his significant schedule of, uh, load. He's got businesses he's doing, of course, the military, his job, and I forget what else. He's got, I think, two businesses going right now. Lots of conflicts. And he, he sent an email to me, which I forwarded to me, uh, requesting that he be allowed to resign because of that background, not because of his schedule, so. And he may be worried about this. I remember me recently because of that very reason. He's been traveling a lot as well. So, sent an email to him, thanking him, uh, and moving forward, uh, as Jake mentioned, as we discussed, I believe in September, we agreed that we would, through attrition, bring the planning commission down to seven people. Just leave us with eight thus far and we're not gonna be moving anybody. We'll just do this as people design or resign, so forth.
Plus Scott has young kids and, yeah, it just goes along with all, all the things he's got going.
Yeah, he's, he's very busy in the business. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And we'd like to Scott, uh, thank Scott very much for all of his efforts he put forward. And I'd like to ask Janelle if she'd come forward for a minute. There's a couple of things I'd like to ask you. This has to do with the trees. Several of us, including myself. Now, before you. I've had several people call me. I've had me, some of my friends are cutting their trees down. I can only speak for my neighborhood. We have young trees and to comply with some of this is, uh, you almost have to cut the tree down to get your dimensions. Uh, did you take that into consideration, Lynn?
We did. So if anyone here is not familiar, did not receive a letter.
I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not.
So, in the summer, late summer, we, um, sent someone out to do inventory, basically of all the vegetation encroachment issues we have throughout the city. So this would be vegetation encroachments on the sidewalk. So there should be clear width of the, the width of the sidewalk up to eight feet tall. And vegetation encroachment on the streets, meaning there should be a clear, the entire street would should be clear up to fourteen feet. In many locations throughout the city, we have trees and shrubs, um, vegetation growing into these clear areas. And this has been an ongoing, um, we've, we've had numerous complaints on this. There are certain areas where it's hard to walk on sidewalks due to this. The decision was made to address the whole city at once, as much as possible. I don't think we could have missed something, but we tried to be as thorough as possible because as soon as we sent out one letter, we get complaints of, well, what about this house and what about that house? So, we wanted to make sure it felt fair, um, that everyone was being addressed and needed to be addressed. So, the, in addition to those letters, another set of letters went out that addressed vision clearance at intersections and stop signs. So we have a few places throughout the city. There weren't, weren't a lot, but there were a few where vegetation is encroaching on the clear distance required to see around a corner. Um, and also several places where stop signs are blocked by vegetation. Uh, some of this is vegetation growing in people's yards, but the majority is what has been planted in the beauty strip or landscape strip between the curb and the sidewalk. So, the letters went out last week and we started getting a lot of phone calls Monday and today. So, the intent is to make our neighborhoods walkable, um, keep the roads clear for, you know, garbage trucks will hit the trees, um, people parking, just the use of the streets and sidewalks. And if trees have been planted in landscape strip, and there are, there are quite a few, um, that are a problem, then either they need to be primed to get them up high enough, or perhaps it is not the right type of tree to be planted on the strip. And that, we have that throughout the city. So we now, we have an approved street tree list now. It's, we've adopted all these. And so if a tree is causing a problem, it's probably not the right type for the width of strip we have. We have pretty narrow strips. They're about four and a half feet wide in most places. And there aren't a lot of trees that are appropriate to plant in that area that won't disrupt the sidewalks or cause these issues. So, we did recognize this when we sent the letters out and the intent is not to try to get, not, not to reduce the trees in the city, but in cases where there's no other option, uh, there may, it may be unnecessary to remove some trees. I know of a couple of places where there really isn't any other option to get the visibility to some of the stop signs without removing a tree that was planted right in front of the stop sign. So, that's what this is about. Um, yesterday I spent an hour or so going out and checking all the people who had called in and asked someone to come up and tell them what they needed to have done. And I have another list, um, of people who came to call in today that I'll go look at tomorrow. So the intent is not to come down hard on people, but it is to help them, you know, if they have, if they need to know what, what they're being asked to change, we're happy to come out and show them and talk about it.
Do they need a permit to cut the tree down?
They don't at the moment. Um, we, uh, a tree ordinance was adopted in October. And, which will require a tree permit for doing things with trees in the right of way. But the intent was to hold off on requiring that permit till we got through this effort. Knowing we were about to do this, we didn't want to send out a letter to everyone saying, you gotta do all these things, and by the way, you have to come get a permit for it. So, that's, that's what we're doing. If there are any other questions, I'd have to try to answer them.
I do have one. I know Becker Ridge, it looks like the beauty strips are a lot narrower than in our subdivision. So, I'm assuming then that it would have to be totally different trees. I mean, that, it looks like it's only maybe three, three and a half feet. It's a lot narrower.
So, one thing we're not doing is going out and checking all the tree types to make sure that they are the approved tree for that width. We're not gonna go make people cut down trees that aren't the right tree for that width, but we do ask that they be primed, so they're not causing problems. Um, in Becker Ridge, the strips are pretty narrow. I have measured one recently.
Just, they're narrower.
They, they are pretty narrow. I, I can't tell you the history on why they are there, but most of the strips are four and a half feet. I think they are in your neighborhood. They need to be five or something.
I think so. They're, they're wide. And I think our new code, what did we do with that? Didn't we go four and a half or five with the new code?
It's not in the code.
Yeah, the, the.
That's not in the new code. It's a, it's a engineering standard that we're gonna put, intentionally, we pulled it out of the zoning codes. We feel it's not appropriate to be in the zoning code. It needs to be in the engineering standards.
As long as we have it covered.
Is that right, Janelle?
Well, I might have missed that. There is a table, but within the old code, and it may still be in the new code, it's also in the transportation system plan, which is where I see them, that defines the street sections, including the lane width, the curb, gutter and sidewalk and plantar strips. But there are ranges. It depends on, it depends on the right of way width and it depends on.
I think ours are just three feet wide, just behind the city here.
Yeah, there's a lot of them that are really narrow. That's why I was concerned.
Going forward, they shouldn't be less than four and a half feet wide.
That's my, that's my.
I couldn't tell you what the history on all of it is.
I'm hoping that in the future we have that covered.
And that, and that's actually really narrow. That's as narrow as you can go.
Well, my, my, for my house, it's only about three feet. Plantar strips only that wide.
I would encourage you to go put a tape measure on it. I'm guessing they're four or four and a half feet if they feel really narrow, but I could do not.
I'm not a lot measured by that. I'm in the same neighborhood you are.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't got that.
Again, we didn't, we're not asking people to go cut down trees if they don't match our current street tree approved list. But if, we spoke to someone the other day who's having to do some work on their sidewalk because the tree, the, and this tree's been planted in twenty years, um, has built up the sidewalks. So, and the homeowner does become responsible for that. So it's, it's in their best interest to not plant the right, the wrong type of trees.
What about the trim, uh, tree height? What is that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
On the roadside, but, but on the sidewalk.
Eight feet on the sidewalk.
In that neighborhood that we have a problem in, that's my neighborhood, yeah. And the trees are over the road, right?
But aren't they, oh, that's an old neighborhood. Isn't the trees old?
Yeah.
So you're dealing with two different things here.
But you still have to cut them to fourteen feet so people can get through the fire trucks, the.
Well, I was always sad that I didn't have a tree in my planter strip, but now I'm not sad anymore.
You're now not jackhammering outside walking right here. The, the rock doesn't talk back or anything.
No, wow, that rock is that stupid, the tonny strip.
This is one of the reasons, actually, when I went to the landings development though, that I was wanting to get the input on what the position is on street trees and front yard trees.
Cause the planner loves all the trees I can possibly get on the streets. The engineer doesn't.
Nothing against trees, but they, they cause these, these issues. So if it's important to the city to have trees in the planter strip, that's, that's a decision that then we, we just need to, um, continue to deal with from a maintenance standpoint.
And tell on trees.
So let's ask this question.
I think our neighborhood, uh, Morningstar is probably among the worst of trees right now. And we have garbage trucks knocking down tree limbs because they're not fourteen feet. They're up summers between seven and ten maybe. Literally, they're walking, locking down tree limbs as they go through to take back our, pick up garbage cans. We have people who drive in motorhomes who won't even go down Megan to turn around because you can't get in there because there's trees and the cars. And I hit my head, I smacked two nights ago in front of a house on a tree that, I'm, I'm five foot nine, smacked, I hit myself in the head in front of a house. So, no big deal. But my point is, is that there's been no discipline to our ordinance at all till now. And we're trying to pay for it through damaged, damaged trees, damaged trucks, damaged heads, uh, and.
Well, it could have gone in the eye.
So, it, it's a need to, we need to find the address. Some of you in the newer homes haven't really experienced it yet, but it's coming if we don't start getting it under control.
What's the age of your neighborhood, Jim?
Sorry?
How old is your neighborhood?
Uh, we built the second to last house ten years ago, so it's.
So it's eleven, twelve years old.
No, no, no.
Morningstar's probably twenty years old.
Probably started twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Really? Morningstar's twenty years old at least, yeah.
The ordinance that he's referring to is actually one that the city's had for a very long time. The tru, new tree ordinance about trees on the planter strips is different, but the clearance, that's nothing new. And from what I've been told from our maintenance staff, the city has addressed this at times over the years, uh, but not consistently. And it's a struggle for her, the city.
Well, I see this as, as, as two sets of problems. I mean, one size doesn't fit all. You've got the old trees that are hanging over and need to be trimmed. And our neighborhood, which is a new neighborhood, my trees are four years old. If I cut them to eighteen feet, I wanna scalp one side of the tree completely off. Now, give me five years and that tree will be big enough and beautiful enough. If I don't butcher it now, it'll look nice and I can trim it. I can trim it to the sidewalk. But because my planter strip is so narrow, I've gotta peel the whole side of that tree off and it doesn't, you know, this is.
It's a challenge, challenge for us when we clean the streets, right? So we can't get underneath those trees and clean the streets correctly. Um, you know, and some of them, you know, it's, you don't mind scraping the side of your truck a little bit, but, uh, some of them are extreme. You just can't get underneath them.
But then again, the garbage truck, a guy comes down my street, takes my garbage cans. He hasn't knocked any trees down yet. So, you know, it's, it's, I still say one, one size doesn't fit all.
In, in any public right of way, you have to have fourteen feet of clearance. That's legal, that's state.
I understand that. That's state.
So I have a question, and this is gonna seem really stupid, but I, I do this all the time, right? So, why can't we have shrubs? What's the definition between a shrub and a tree? I mean, you can tell me that there is, but do you get what I'm saying?
Are you asking why you can't have shrubs in the landscape strip?
Yeah.
Um, there's no rule against having shrubs in there. You just have to keep them out of the street and sidewalk.
So then why is it in the, in the areas that have narrow areas, why can we not ask them just to put shrubs in instead? I'm just asking a question.
You mean, ask at a, you're talking about, why can we not ask the developers and builders to put shrubs in?
Just, well, in the future, we're gonna have and put wider ones in. So I, that's, that'll be different where we can do trees. But right now, we've got the three-foot ones that have been allowed for however long, and, and trees still really don't make sense in those areas. They don't.
Shrubs will be constipated, so...
That's not my problem.
We, we have a regulation.
Well...
But what's wrong with the trees? It's not your problem.
Well, what I mean is, so they're not gonna get tall and, and get in the area in the way of people.
No, but they're gonna get wide.
Sure, but, once it gets over five or six foot tall, he can't see over it.
We, we haven't required, we haven't regulated people from putting shrubs in the landscape strip.
Well, that's good.
There's also never been something required of builders to put anything other than tree in the landscape strip. They do have to finish landscaping it, but bar jobs around, yeah, whatever. So, I, I don't think there's anything that prevents people from planting a smaller bush as long as they're maintaining it.
Okay, but my, my point was instead of a tree.
The purpose of trees is different.
I know. He's up back there shaking his head. You couldn't see it, but he is.
Well, the purpose of trees, and this would be a, if you wanna put something different in the land use code, then that's, but trees are for shading generally, and shrubs isn't going to accomplish that. So it depends what your goal is and what you think from, you looking counsel things at the right.
I was just trying to get greenery. I was trying to get greenery, and especially in the three-foot wide where there's not really room for trees.
Well, they can plant bushes with the tree.
Okay, I'm out here by myself, okay? That's normal. You are free to plant a bush.
You can plant bushes all around the tree.
Oh, you come and then buy my house.
Don't we require one strip tree and one in the yard tree? Is that a code?
It was an either or.
Either or.
Either or.
Oh, it's either or?
Trip or yard.
The old code was either or. The new code, as drafted right now, is one in the strip and one in the yard.
I thought so. I thought so.
And I would say the old code was not enforced even up until very recently because there seemed to have been a, some sort of administrative, um, approach to not, from a maintenance standpoint, not require those trees. So, if you go through, so the new neighborhoods, you'll see lots where there is neither.
So Jimmy, you and I should go walking around our, our neighborhood.
With a hard hat.
With a hard hat on. Because I'm not fourteen feet tall.
Yeah, you guys don't have big enough trees yet.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Eleven years old.
Yeah.
I was the first house, and I'm eleven years old.
Okay, before we... That was good. Before we adjourn any other discussions you, the matters you'd like to bring up.
So do we have any idea when we're gonna do the next code, code?
Workshop?
Yeah.
No, we haven't talked about it yet because, uh, we've been waiting for the next version, the next draft, to be completed. And John had a vacation in there that he had to go on, so that's, that's slowed things down a little bit. Um, but it's our understanding that he's making some good progress on that, and as soon as we hear that he's close enough, we'll make sure to get one scheduled. I don't think it's gonna be December. Uh, maybe it will be. We'll see if we have enough, uh, lead time to get one done in December. Uh, schedules get pretty dicey in December, so we'll see if that comes through, but it's looking more likely January.
I would think for January, we're not gonna be here.
We don't have any hearing items in December, no.
We're not gonna be here December.
See, there you go. Schedules get tough in December.
We won't be either.
There you go. So it's probably realistically not gonna happen in, uh, in December. It's gonna be in January. And then I can't remember, did we decide we were gonna do a workshop at the city council level, or did we not decide that? We talked about it. Oh, here, here comes city council.
You guys just need to work.
We had this discussion during our council meeting, and what we asked, what we ended up suggesting was, I want you to have gone through the process of your final update. When you are at a point you're ready to approve and recommend to the council, we'd ask for a special workshop between all of you and the council, where you and John would review somebody, the highlights of the changes that you made.
Would...
So a second?
That would all happen before the first planning commission hearing? It would be awkward to have a planning commission hearing and then a workshop afterwards. That wouldn't make... Okay, so before the first planning commission hearing, you want to joint PC, city council workshop? Okay.
Yeah, at some point. I'm not sure what...
Yeah, that, we could do that. That makes sense.
Mike, this came out of a discussion that I've been having for so time. How do you get, how do you effectively get the council at this speed and all the work that you have done?
Sure, sure.
So that when we come to the council approval, we don't spend a whole bunch of time trying to reiterate all that work. So, we're asking for a special meeting with your folks where you tell us what you decided on, kind of go through the bullet tied effort about the key changes, and then we can get back real quickly behind it.
Okay, well, we're darn close to that, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. When are we gonna see some beautifying of the intermodal places?
Oh, it's already happening.
I don't see any beautifying.
Well, there's bulldozers out getting rid of the weeds and all things.
Why should I know?
Do you read papers?
Why would I know the answer to that question?
Do you read somebody's paper?
Yes.
It showed the guy that's on the bulldozer.
I know, but I, I can, you can see the house now.
Eight by ten colored glossy photos.
Hey, you can see the house now.
Kevin is on, on that board, so he can respond if I miss something. But I, I understand that over this next twelve months, we'll be getting all documentation complete, the design complete, the contracts award and so forth, so that during the next year, construction actually takes place. So we're probably one to two years away to having it look like you might want it to look. So it's probably two years before it's up and running.
The fire station looks nice.
Yeah, you can see the house.
Jim?
Jim?
All the blueberries were thrown over it. Yeah, these bulldozers.
Mr. Mayor, Thursday night, you're interviewing new candidates. Tell us about that.
Yes, Thursday night, starting at five thirty, we will begin the interview process for three candidates for the open positions on a council created by, uh, Don Miller's departure, uh, which may be where Don, uh, resigned due to health issues, and the council totally supports him in that decision. Uh, and we've got three candidates, Mark Robb, uh, John Sullivan, and Rob, the help me with the last name.
Rob, what's Rob's last name?
Rob was, Rob was, Rob's on the, on the brush committee, John's on this committee, Mark Robb is on the budget committee. So we have three solid candidates. We've done a good, you know, a lot of good voluntary work already, uh, so it's gonna be a challenge picking the right person. So, but that process begins Thursday night, five thirty. It's open to the public. We will not be taking public input in the interview process. Uh, there's a good chance that Rob won't be able to be here, so we may have, get one more meeting to get him interviewed over the next couple of weeks. So, the process will begin Thursday night, and we hope to have it done a little later than December tenth, which is the next council meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
You want questions?
Not to go back to your seats.
Did you get back to your seat? Yeah.
I have one question. December, well, January first, don't we have three positions that will be, I don't know who they are. Oh.
On the planning commission.
Okay, two.
Did we ever find out when our time was up? Yeah, we did.
Yeah, you drew a lot, we did last.
Anything else? We're adjourned.
You're one of them, and I have a feeling Scott must have been one of them.
Stay where we're at, will you?
I apologize for not doing the roll call. I got out of order. Slipped my mic.
Here. Finally. Been a rough call. That would be you?
I think it'd make a good one.
And, and oh, by the way.